Yeah, Rose.
To the last.
I call the board. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is August 25th.
Larry?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
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 Do you have the minutes from July 28th? Any corrections, additions, deletions, changes? Okay. August 11th. Okay. August 11th as well. If not, is there a motion?
Summoned.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, there's a second, any questions? Brokaw.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
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 To which court we're talking?
All I have is tax income since the last meeting, 463,426 dollars and four cents.
Anyone from the audience that wish to address the board? Matt, Finance Administration, Trustee Curtis.
Uh, we talked last, in the last one there in the 11th meeting, concerning borrowing 150,000 dollars and determining the term of that loan and where that loan would go. We also talked about having once-a-year payments. After reevaluating, going through the loan, we would go with a 2.15 percent. And the payment would be for engineering services for the Pennfield Street STP. And the payments would be once a month. It would be electronically pulled from the village's accounts. The village treasurer agreed with this for the fact that it does save us about 1,500 dollars on the overall cost of the loan. So, I make a motion for ordinance number 1214. Authorizing the borrowing of funds from First Community Bank and Trust in the amount of 150,000 dollars for a term of five years at an interest rate of 2.15 percent for the purposes of paying for the engineering expenses related to the Pennfield Street STP project.
Second. Is the motion on the floor a second? Any questions in your comments? Brokaw.
Waylon?
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, the electric aggregation update, um, we've, as we talked many months ago, we're looking to get a revised rates for the fact our rate was going to expire. Right now, our rate is, the new rate will be 6.5 percent, which is lower than the ComEd rate, or about 6.5 percent lower than ComEd's rate. Bobby, want to give more information about?
Yeah, we locked in a three-year rate. ComEd's rates are forecasted to increase over the next three years. So, we thought locking in a three-year rate, no one meant to pay a little more now, which is still less than ComEd's, which should hedge against years two and three. A lot of people are confused with the letters going out. Home Field is the name of the company that we signed with. And people can opt out, if they don't want to participate, they can opt out at any time. They don't have to opt out now, they can opt out later. And it's truly up to the resident whether or not they want to participate in this litigation. My recommendation would be that there are some one-year rates out there that you can get that are a little lower than what we have. What, the three-year rate is something that no resident can participate in.
But if they opt out, they can't opt in later on until the three-year term is over with?
I believe that's correct. If you opt out, you cannot get back in for that three-year period.
Right. Because you're in for the long haul.
Right.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people come up and ask questions about this.
There was one, I mean, there was one question where a resident called and it appeared that his rate was much cheaper, but he didn't add in the fees.
There are other costs associated with it. Ours is the power cost, which includes the transmission to the ComEd system. Some other companies will tell you this is the rate for what it costs to generate power, but it's a hidden fee of transmission from that power plant to the ComEd grid.
By the way, they have to make sure to read their bill and actually get the right cost.
You're still going to be paying the ComEd transmission rate. That's something that's always going to be taxed regardless of where you get your power from, whether it's ComEd or if it's from another power company. Anything else you want to add up? That ends your report.
Public buildings and properties, parks, recreation.
Yeah, we have a couple bills that we need to pay. We have Jeanette Spott for the portable, John, for one month, for 70. We have another draw for the progress payment for JDK Construction in the amount of 28,490. I'd like to make a motion to pay these two bills in the amount to total 28,560.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, a second. Any questions? Brokaw.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Waylon?
Yes.
The, as of this printing, the new drive-in box is being installed, has that been?
It's done.
It's done. Okay. The ceiling comes next, then the painting. I hear that the colors are being picked out as we speak. Right, Jeanette?
Bye.
Tomorrow or Wednesday?
Tomorrow or Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay. And then finally, after that, the carpet goes in, the tile goes in. We also have a sign that we have a bid on. What was the price on this?
2,080 for double pieces.
2,080. And what this sign is going to do is we're going to put it up front. Obviously, we can't afford the LED sign or anything like that, but the way this sign is designed is we can always take out the municipal building part and we can use this on a different facility or somewhere else in the village. You know, if we wanted to move it downtown or whatever the case may be. So, we're going to go with this versus that, obviously, what we can't afford on the other end.
They did get another design price of about 22,000 and, I don't know, is that this thing?
When we're doing this and to minimize the amount of damage when we go and redo that parking lot, are we looking to put in a conduit out to that area where the sign's going to go?
Power is already there.
It's already there.
It's already there. And, uh, with its own circuit.
Right.
As part of the old building?
Mm-hmm.
Something that you're not aware of is the air conditioner does work and it's very cold.
Okay, good. I know that, didn't L&amp;H check that out before we even started?
The heat and then last Friday, they actually turned out the air conditioner, it's been running ever since.
Oh, good. Okay.
And the duct works here very clean, so I don't think we have to clean them.
The matrix, I expect, the ducts.
I know with this humidity and everything, if they're going to paint and mud and, you know, everything else, so that's a good thing. With the payment to JDK, 58,275 dollars remains in the general, on the general contract, correct? Yet to be done, or yet to be paid. I don't think we have a revised.
There is a revised, there is a budget in your board pack, I believe, but this thing changes every day because we get new numbers in, things get changed. I'm looking for, I'm looking at which version you have. Even today, the numbers change. But it gives you a good idea of where we are with the project.
And?
I don't have any. I haven't got you any one of those.
I didn't think it was in there.
I probably pulled it because I was updating it. But we have the project budget if you're interested in looking at it. It's a fluid document, changes almost every day. And when we get done, we're going to be right near zero. We should have everything we want except the LED sign and generator. It doesn't appear right now, we get the generator.
Okay. Scoreboards, Fireman's Park, from what I understand, is they are done and wired and up and running, correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Update on the new beer stand. I believe the last Fourth of July Commission meeting, they approved to go ahead and tear down the beer stand and also put up just the beer stand at this point.
Beer stand is gone.
It's gone, right. It's gone, but that's what we're going to concentrate on first, is to do the beer stand and then when funds come in, we're going to go to the storage facility and then the concession stand.
We're not necessarily in that order.
Right. Right, either or. Fireman's ball lights, ball field lights?
Yes, we received 20,000 from the state. Of course, this project's about 80,000 or 90,000 to reach, redo all the lights. So, we applied for other grants and were turned down because unfortunately, although the lights we have are very inefficient, they're not used enough to justify changing them out to the, what they call the green heads or the LED heads. So, what we're going to do is we are going to get an electrician to give us a price and replace one of the poles, one we believe is bad, and replace the lights. And at least bring the wattage down 50 percent to what we're using now because even though we replaced those breakers not too long ago, it is still frying a high box. So, I think our only solution is to drop those 1,400s down to eight or 900 watt lows.
Have you contacted Edison?
Yeah.
Because they're all for having people become more efficient.
The only problem is we don't use them enough.
It's still a draw on their system when those units are online.
Yeah.
I mean, they're looking for efficiencies so they can minimize the amount of impact that they have. You may want to contact them to see if there's any incentive they have.
I already have.
You have?
And we were turned down. Okay. Yeah, I'm looking for.
Bolt Stand Park update. Doug Short is going to extend the infield to the norther, two northerly fields to allow pento ball.
Question on that.
Yes.
Weren't the two, when those, when once that park was designed, it was four tall diamonds.
Right.
Two to the north and two to the south. Two to the south were village ball dimes, two to the north were school ball dimes.
Well, it wasn't designated that way. What happened was is we put the backstops and improved the fields on the two south fields.
The other two were.
And then the school put up the backstops for the two northerly fields.
Right, because those would be the school's fields. Now, why would we be modifying those fields without the school's information? I mean, they should be buying into this. It's kind of part of the property.
It's really not their fields, it's our fields.
I don't know about that.
Because it's our property.
Then why were they responsible to put up the?
Because we, we did.
They donated the land to them for their junior high.
Right. So, this was a payment for the?
Yeah, they put the backstops in and they put the, actually, we put the egg line down, maybe we'll do that. They just put the backstop.
Yep.
We actually built the original fields.
Right, and that's school, or that's village property. That's our 10 acres.
That was their contribution.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. And, you know, of course, we're going to need, or do some more egg line to enlarge those fields. That is my report.
For any building, Bill.
Building, Department of Monthly Court was in post for year review and for discussion the MGM Development Agreement as pertains to the golf course. The question has been raised about the validity of the agreement as applies to the golf course. There are multiple owners of the property that was originally held by Jack Mayer, who signed the development agreement that he has a possible now to enforce this agreement on multiple owners due to the way the agreement is structured. Should the golf course be liable for off-site infrastructure costs if it does not build? Potential purchasers of the golf course would like to opt out of the development agreement with the understanding that their property is on open space, can, can't, and they can't do any development on their property without the village approval. We concur that these restrictions exist regardless of this agreement and that the agreement should be detached from the golf course property. So, we're asking, what is your opinion on the board about this?
So, in other words, we keep it the way it is or, you know, put this into Wayman's terms?
By the way, this is, is, I'll actually, Bob, I want you to explain this.
Yeah, when we met with the potential purchasers of the golf course, we're concerned about the financial requirements of the development agreement linked to their property. At the 250th building permit, you got a couple of water towers, you've got to give us a half lane for the sewer plant at the 750th building permit. They don't want anything to do with that. They have no control over the building, right? So, they want it out. If they, if we automate the development agreement, um, their land is all zone open space, especially this golf course. So, their right to develop on the south nine, in theory, goes away as well. They're contractual. Remember that whole, right, we got sued over?
Right.
So, I don't think it really changes anything. When we talked with Tim and Tim Kuiper said, "It's zoned open space and 2024, the agreement expires anyway." Do you really want to let a potential purchaser of a golf course walk over the financials and the development?
The main thing is, I think, is, is, is we want it to be a golf course, it will be a golf course. Many protections that are there are still there and anything that they want to do, they would still have to come before us. That's in Wayman's terms.
Okay. But it's the same, we didn't want to do anything without you guys knowing why, because there's still several of you on the board when we negotiated that.
Right.
But now there's several owners out there, which really make it a nightmare.
And if these people bought the golf course and then went away in five years, this would have no impact on anything in the future. It'd still be zone open space and we wouldn't be over the hump a long, long time.
That's correct. The problem we have is in the development areas, with this agreement, we're in the situations now where we've got multiple owners. Now, how are you going to enforce this development agreement when there's multiple owners of the property? Because when we did the development agreements with one owner and he understood that he needed his 250th house, he had to pour up money. Now, how do you control the 250th permit when there's some lots out there and they have builders buying pods and things like that?
Was there anything in the development agreement that stated what happened if he sold the property?
No.
Because at the time, they were growing so fast, we never thought that.
But again, it's, it's open space. That means you can't build on it.
Right.
But it doesn't mean you have to keep it as a golf course.
No.
When you make it open space, that means that thing can go right to grassland, you know, a field grass, unmaintained, it's open space. And the idea of so much before they know it does not exist in open space territory. So, yes, if it does go to somebody else, they can make that entire thing open space with not a lick of golf course on it. It doesn't mean you can keep it as a golf course. Now, the development agreement discusses what has to occur and what, as a minimum, has to be maintained. If you get rid of this, that means they don't need to keep it as a golf course. I know. What else they would do, they don't have to keep it as a golf course. They could keep it as open space and not have one piece of investment on that property other than the land. It's, it's, it's very hard to say what open space can be used for.
Right, because a lot of times, you know, these properties were probably sold fronting on a golf course. You know, and that was their development agreement.
And there's, there's stipulation in here about, you know, 18 holes, 72 regulated golf course, or three night holes, but, and again, I agree, it's very hard to administer a, a contract that was signed by one guy to multiple bodies, but just because it's zoned open space doesn't mean what you see is what's going to be there in 20 years.
Right.
I think that's even true with the agreement, Ryan, because if you have a bankrupt owner, how are you going to make somebody use a golf course? You just throw it.
Well, now, when does this agreement go void?
2024.
So, anybody that buys that property, if this agreement stays on there, they can't change it. It talks about what happens with the golf course. It clearly states that.
But you can't enforce something when somebody will think.
I agree with that. Why do you bother doing a PUD?
Because of the zoning. It's zoned open space.
Yes, and again, zoning it open space, we clearly made sure. I had to keep it as a golf course.
We zone property commercially, we can't zone properties for driving users. And that's, that's the issue we have here. We can't, in that agreement, we try to negotiate keeping the golf course open. It's obvious in the secondhand times, I don't care what agreement you negotiate, money's not there, it'll be put in weak. And there's nothing for you to stop.
So, there's no zoning for golf course?
No, it's, it's, a golf course is open space.
Open space.
It falls into that category, and it's, again, zoning is all categorization of properties. What fits into that categorization? Open space has a lot of pieces that come with it.
Can we remove certain articles from the agreement? Leave the agreement intact and remove certain articles of it? The agreement's going to stay intact, all we're doing is removing the golf course property from the agreement.
I think what John's getting at is why not just, if, if you have different purchasers of the property, of different sections of the property, then modify that agreement to that property.
Who's the other party that agrees to that modification?
Well, it's, right now, it's going to be the, the people purchasing the golf course.
What about the other developed parcels out here?
They're not, this is all, I think all we would be doing is stipulating, ask if you maintain as a golf course.
Well, getting back to Scott's argument, they, they were sold lots guaranteeing them a golf course view.
Again, I think, I think what John's getting at is modify the agreement for the golf course, which start with this, and you would line out what doesn't apply to them because they're not developing houses.
Well, I think that's what we're asking.
No, what you're asking is for us to remove them from the agreement. What John is saying is modify the agreement, removing what doesn't apply to the golf course properties. And say, "Well, if we're going to remove you from this agreement, you still need to comply with these sections of the articles."
I don't know if that's the, that's why I asked.
Nothing we're doing is moving.
Remove certain articles, like can we remove Article 12?
Can I make a suggestion? You told it, Ryan. The, we're not going to be able to answer that without the attorney. If I can make a suggestion, we ran it by the attorney. If we leave it up to the attorney, which is the best way to accomplish this, protect the village and protect the golf course. The golf course, you, I don't think we can answer it, but you're asking, we should leave up to the attorney.
I want to tell you, you cannot protect the golf course.
I, I understand. By the way, as we ran this by Tim, Tim agreed with the route the route we want to take. We can pass on these questions to him and our concerns, and I don't think we can get an answer. By the way, as we leave it up to him, on the best way to proceed and to protect the village and protect the owners of the golf course, which is what they're asking.
Has Tim seen this agreement? Because it looked like it was, it was done under Tom Kadim's direction.
I can't remember who.
Well, it says, "With copy to the village's attorney," which is Tom Kadim.
Well, he's seen it, I'm sure.
He's never seen it with Clipper Wasson.
Sure.
He probably knows it upside down all the way.
We got sued for 12 million on this thing.
I don't recover.
Yeah.
Remember, we stood not here when Eric given us the lineup. Let's just put it that way, a line.
Yeah, I think Bob's right. I think we should let the attorney or, right, let the attorney look at it and see what we change.
The problem we have is they're, they're of the opinion that this agreement ties them to certain financial commitments. In terms of, which all stated in Article 12, which is what I was asking, if we can just remove Article 12.
Well, we can't remove it for the rest of the same property.
I think we're saying, things that have figured out positively.
Yeah, we can't remove it for the rest of the properties, although I don't know how to remove it, because you'd be out of multiple owners now.
Don't, do the multiple owners see this agreement before they buy? So, does the bank even tell them that there's a, an agreement?
Just like any other covenants, anything else that's tied to the property.
It's tied to the property.
This is recorded to the?
It's supposed to be, but.
Well, it's, it's, hold on, it's hard to put it that way for the fact that what's recorded to the property is any covenants that were established by the PUD. The PUD itself, it's not really tied to the property because the covenants and the development is done under the PUD. So, any resident in, in where John lives, where I live, any of those areas that have a PUD on them, the resident doesn't see the PUD that was signed with the developer, they see the, the covenants that were established by the developer.
But you'll, you'll have a line in there to refer to this document, I'm sure.
Can't see it. You'd have to try to find it. All, all the people in, in Curry Crossing see covenants.
Right.
This is what's tied to their thing and this is what's put against your property. It's on there, it's signed against you. So, anybody says, "I didn't know it was there," it's part of your title search.
But the builder should have this, this should be on the title for the builders as well.
That should, yeah, it provides requirements.
Right.
But this really drives the developer of the area, not the builder of the building.
Well.
Because the builders aren't going to put in a.
But it's the developer, who's the builders? I mean, that.
The developer is the guy that goes on, develops the land and gets the builders to come in and build the buildings.
But that's not what, what's happening right now.
No, the developer is, is gone.
Right, the developer's gone, that there's no developer. So, these guys are coming in and buying these existing lots.
And I think that's what we're concerned with right now.
Correct. That's exclusive of the golf course issue.
Right. That's, that's regardless.
Right.
There were commitments made to us that things were supposed to happen at certain points in time. Now that that one owner is gone and several owners have taken his place, I don't know how you enforce that. And who's responsible for the 250th unit? The poor sucker that pays the 250th permit, you know?
Now, now, that brings up another point, is these builders that are coming in, are they using those free?
Yep.
Well, okay, so now they know about the free stuff, why don't they know about the rest of the agreement? Do they just kind of forget about the rest of the agreement?
Take the, take what's free? Only use what is to your advantage.
Right. Exactly. So, these builders, they understand what they're getting into.
The problem is no one is, is, it's Bob's saying, a developer is, is the king in the middle who's got, who's getting all the money from all these people buying in. There's nobody on top, doing the full administration, who's going to be able to put in that water tower on that 250th unit.
Right, if these guys aren't going to do that, why are they getting the free tap-ins?
How many units are they having now? Do you have any idea? Do you guess?
120.
So, there's 130.
But what we're, what we're safe on is they only have 300 developed, there's two pods out there that haven't been developed and won't be developed until this thing is redone. So, they might go 50 over when we get in this deal, but.
That's if every lot out there is filled.
Right, and I think that's going to be a lot, way beyond my career.
Way beyond 2024.
Yeah.
Before this would expire any.
So, I said, we, we went the argument over, uh, agreement or agreed to anyway. You know? So, I've started over.
I'm just saying that, you know, there might be some teeth in here that you can go after some of those builders that are, you know.
I, I think you could. You could just say we're out of capacity, sorry. We have no, you had an agreement with somebody. But the problem is, he took those tap-in certificates as part of this deal and he went to the bank and used them as plating. So, when the thing collapsed, the bank gave the certificates with the land to, of course, the NACO. That's what happened. Apparently, those things had some value.
Yeah, they're selling these lots flat at a time, you know?
And the reason he wanted to plat the subdivision on the golf course is I don't think he ever intended to build, but he was going to use that for plating. You know, they got plated lots, I mean, as a percentage. That can always be borrowed off of, of plated lots.
Right.
That's why the other pod didn't get developed, because it wasn't on the golf course.
It was removed.
And then there's another one near the pool that wasn't plotted, because that's when the fight started.
By the way, those certificates also expire.
2024. Twenty twenty-four.
Yep, twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
I don't think he's gonna use them all the time here. I could be wrong.
You know, I'm all for keeping the golf course as open space. It's a golf course too, you know?
Why don't we just pass a motion stating that, and have the attorney find a way to make all parties happy? I don't know what else we can do.
If we have to version from the village board, which way to go, and then once the attorney creates a document, then we'll get that.
I don't think we have a problem getting rid of that development agreement, because that's only a negative, right? Because that was gonna take away open space.
I wouldn't say get rid of the development agreement, you're removing the golf course property from.
From the development agreement.
I believe Tim probably would have to create a document that he would have to bring before the board once we add it back.
Right, but see that, what the golf course doesn't want is they will, remember they're gonna take out what holes where they're gonna develop.
The entire south half.
Right, and see now, if we get rid of that development for the current golf course, they're never gonna be able to do that again.
Well, remember, the part that was in debate was if he had the right to develop that area. This doesn't say he had the right to develop that area. That's what the whole battle is all about.
By the way, in the conversation we had with Tim, you're confident that we are protecting them, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
And we'll have him draw up the document, which we believe that we have to do.
Well, let's just do that.
Well, hang on, if we do that, what does that do to this PUD agreement?
It stays intact. We're not doing anything with this PUD.
Yeah, you are. You're modifying it by having the golf course extracted. That's what I'm worried about. Are we starting, are we creating a legal document that circumvents an existing document without modifying that document? And then who signs off on agreeing to that removal of the golf course?
And again, let's leave that up to Tim. We already discussed it with Tim. Tim understood exactly what we wanted, and he had the, he was confident that we could do this without any problems. I think maybe going the route that Jonathan wanted to go was taking pieces out of it. That, I have a feeling, that changes the entire document. I doubt very much we could do. Removing the golf course, Tim didn't have a problem. It's a lot of what he needed to do.
Sounds good. It's gotta come back here anyway, right?
Correct. And then, just to make that point, anything that the golf course or anybody else wants to do has to come back before the board anyways. They don't get to anything unless we agree.
It may be simply passing a zoning ordinance, saying that that's zone open space. Regardless of current development.
Right, yeah.
So, you'll talk to the attorney then? Status of the vacant buildings in the downtown, old downtown area. We have still not received a response from the buck miners to the letter we sent down on July nineteen pertaining to their building. We have also been told that Mike Stellula has the prints for the old Wayne Pauffer building restoration, and it's nearly complete. The building program will be issued soon. Do you know who is doing that restoration? Does it go to St. Lawrence?
Yes, Wayne Walker Harvard.
No one bought it or anything? No one bought that building till you fix it up?
Wayne Walker Harvard?
Yeah.
Yes, someone did buy the building.
Two years ago.
Oh, yeah, I mean, but there's not a new owner?
No, no, the same job.
Okay. And our August twenty-eighth PCC meeting has been canceled due to the state not sending us the final grant agreement. Comprehensive land plan, used land project is still on.
Thank you for the question.
The buck miners, were they given a time limit?
Yeah, they were. That was just what we received. That letter was in your bag.
September first.
Yeah, that was definitely.
It's this weekend.
Police department also reported, it's enclosed for your review. Horsemen monthly report is also enclosed. Mosquito maintenance program update, Bud?
Spring mosquitoes every Thursday unless it rains, and then it gets pushed off. I don't know how this week is gonna go, because it looks like we're gonna have rain all the way till Sunday. And if that happens, probably end of Sunday night or Monday. That's all I have.
How long do we go with this?
Well, usually, probably until like the start of October, but it, a lot depends on the weather. And it looks like, you know, we might get into the end of October this year. Last year, we went to the end of October too, didn't we? I think we did. It was a longer, it was a longer season than usual.
With the rain and the warmth we're having now, we're gonna be out for a while.
Yeah.
Really depends on when that first cold snap comes through. Starts getting cooler, you want it to start spraying.
We've got security materials to continue.
Workover, yes, sir.
Nexo engaged roll-up date, roll-out date update to be provided by the chief.
I don't have any update on it right now. Just wanna urge everybody and remind everybody to go to the village website or the police department website, click on the Nexo badge, and enroll in the program, and you'll get your community alerts, notifications, and advisories.
You're already in?
You're already in, yes.
Okay, Starcom radio conversation update to be provided by the chief.
Don't have an update on that. I'm being told it'll be like maybe the last week in August, we should get the radios. You guys know if that agreement with the board of directors and Eastcom, was that finalized with Motorola?
I haven't heard anything else.
And I haven't heard anything, so I believe that has.
I think we voted on that last meeting, but I can't.
We did, cause when the Motorola rep was in Beecher last time, he said they're just working out some bugs on that agreement. And then he said we should have them within the second.
These towns could have the whole tab on you.
Yes, they are.
Did they repo your radios yet?
Still got them.
Then you must be all kicking.
It's good.
Okay, consider appointment of the part-time law.
I'm looking to hire a guy named Bill Betker, William Betker. And just, I just need, I just advise you that, I mean, we are low on part-timers right now. A lot of our part-timers are reaching their hours, their maximum hours they can work. So, come November, we're gonna be hurting. We might have to be hiring a few more part-timers also. And the reason, the reason we're hurting on the hours now is because of the two that are out on temporary disability. And now they got the vacations going on, and so we got officers covering vacations. And Officer Fravel resigned to accept a full-time position with Piattone, so this Bill Betiger would be replacing Fravel's position.
Didn't have to leave too?
Yeah, he left. He went to Wilmington full-time. We lost Andretta. She went to Piattone full-time. So, they all wanna make a career out of it, and full-time's not available. They'll go where they can get the full-time work.
Now, Aaron Decordé is going to be absent for a while. Have we got code enforcement company?
Yes, I'll be working on it, sir.
I hate it every time I walk out of my house here lately. We gotta stay on it. Consider a motion approving a contract in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred with the Melrose Power Tech NEX for two thousand fifteen fireworks display. The commission has recommended approval of a contract for the two thousand fifteen show at the same price as the two thousand thirteen show. Last one minute in the middle, recommend that we approve it. I'd like to make a motion approving a contract in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred with the Melrose Power Tech NEX for the two thousand fifteen fireworks display.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, second. Any questions to the board?
Yeah, so this was not last year's. This is the, we're going back.
We're going back.
This is the new world.
That's something everybody did agree to.
Yeah, yeah, we're going back, yes.
Okay, motion on the floor, second.
Quayle?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes, Larry?
Yes.
Any questions at the chief or myself?
Mr. Coleman, I know you're getting jumped on by by code enforcement issues. Are we aware of them now? There are things that you should let us know about so we can address, you know what I'm saying? You should have, you did enable everything about it. It was Mr. Lads that did it to you, right?
Yeah, no, it's not Mr. Lads. It's other, the hardware store is kind of tech, but we dealt with that situation.
Has that been taken care of yet?
Yes.
Behind hardware store, that's been cut?
Yeah, the bushes, no, yeah, it was all cut last.
Yeah, it was cut and thrown across the fence.
Yeah, he left, and there Patty, I talked to Patty, and she was calling him. They should have drug it out to be picked up today, Ron.
I was there all day Saturday morning, and he was going, they would be by the street by Saturday night.
Like I said, I didn't see if they were picked up today or not, but I know that they caught them, and I know they just dropped them by the bushes. They're in Patty's.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
Okay.
Are there any other ones you can think of? I'm sorry, any board member?
Grass cutting.
Grass?
Grass cutting.
But where are the locations, you know? I know one on Prairie, we have a backyard.
Fourteen forty-four.
Crooky three.
Crooked Creek.
That was done.
Yeah, yeah.
It was done, okay.
Yeah. He took care of that.
Now, there's one south of him that's bad.
But we got you somebody on code enforcement. We just can't let the guy.
Parcel by Craigel, the Craigel, over there by Hunter's Chase. Just before you get to their house, going north, on the same side of the street.
West of the pond? Is that the one along Route one that's west of the pond?
Yeah, Route one.
That three acres thing there or whatever. Oh, the little ten acre piece there?
Whatever it is on the main.
Yeah, it looks pretty shaggy.
Yes, it does.
And we gotta make sure we log this so we know, like, I didn't know about the hardware thing.
Yeah.
The hardware store.
Well, I know, I know.
What happened was?
Did you get out of the street?
Yeah, I got, I got a change.
Isn't the other one by the nursing home, I think that one was taken care of.
Which one?
The one by the nursing home that that was taken care of.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the ten acres, Jim's tree, that one, he has a contract for cutting that one, so we can get on in for that.
I actually thought the grass cutting, they've been doing a better job this year than the previous year. It seems like.
We're getting more complaints this year though.
I think part of the reason is because the weather wasn't conducive of cutting the lawn, and a lot of it is in the complaints started coming in. I think it's safe to assume right now, all the lots that were cut at one time probably have to be recut because of the way that we've been getting them. So, I think it's safe to assume.
Yeah, unfortunately, like that ten acres by the power wash, till it dries out, you can't get in there.
Yeah.
It's a swamp. Just gonna be lucky to get in there in the next two weeks, you know?
Would you or the chief like to report on the Citizens Police Academy?
Yes, what, I came up with a list. I'm gonna give this to Jeanette so she can post this on the website also. I sent out a Nexo message on the Citizens Police Academy, coming up with some like frequently asked questions. Like, what is a Citizens Police Academy? Citizens Police Academy is your opportunity to learn more about how the Beecher Police Department operates. The academy runs once a year, usually in the fall. We're doing this year. The Citizens Police Academy is a group of Beecher area citizens and/or business owners who are interested in learning more about how their police department operates and the policing challenges our community faces. Participants in each session commit to meeting for three hours, one night per week, for ten weeks, to learn more about each aspect of the department. Now, the purpose of the Citizens Police Academy is to develop positive relations between police and community through education. The goals are to create a growing nucleus of responsible, well-informed citizens who have the potential of influencing the public opinions about police practices and services. Citizens will gain appreciation of the problems and challenges facing law enforcement and have an opportunity to offer comments and ideas regarding solutions. The instructors of the academy are officers and personnel from the department who speak on their areas of expertise, as well as specialized guest speakers. Now, how the participants are selected is first, they gotta be eighteen years of age or older. They must be a resident of Beecher, Washington Township, or a business owner in the area. And again, the participants will be chosen at my discretion, and no criminal records. Each participant will be subject to a background, a fingerprint-based background check. The subjects that are covered, officer survival, use of force investigations, juvenile, DUI, traffic enforcement, police weapons. They'll get a tour of the Will County Jail. We do a crime scene and a practical. They learn about crisis intervention training, the Mobile Field Force, the K-9. We do building searches, traffic stops, and then we're gonna hold a graduation. But it's, right now, it's only open to twelve participants. So, hopefully, if we get an overwhelming interest of this, we wanna do this annually.
I saw one hand up a little while ago. The gentleman in the audience brought a little flag.
Well, the applications are available at the village hall, the police department. You can go to the village website. You can download the application. Unfortunately, I didn't put a deadline on when the applications are due. So, let's just say by Monday, September twenty-second, and I'll get a new press release.
Have you started receiving it yet?
We've, that I know of, there was like three or four that took out applications. We haven't got them back yet.
Where are these trainings gonna be held, Jeff, from here?
It depends on the size. There, we'll probably hold them at different areas. But most of the time, yeah, it probably won't be here.
Ron, are you thinking about it, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Is in your report, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, the works, Dr. Porth. Water department and sewer department, both their reports are enclosed for your review. Water main restorations update. We just got through and finished with all our winter water main restorations. I'm sure as many of you have seen driving down the roads. We'll have several restorations that we will try to get done before winter hits, including asphalt and everything from spring and summer water main breaks. You wanna add anything to that? Have you started making some measurements on sizes?
No, I'll be meeting with Vince from All-Pro. I finally got in touch with him. He's the one that did a lot of the restoration asphalt work on Elm Street and on Prairie. And I'm real happy with his work. I'll be meeting with him either tomorrow or the following day. I might as well go into leak detection. We got the, you know, you got the paperwork from Simpson. I faxed over a three-page survey to ATS and to Ralph. We should be getting paperwork, and he probably will be coming out here within the next week.
In that restoration, boy, that, again, when I was part washing the house Saturday morning, did they ever come over? And that corner that's not done, where the handicap ramp was taken out and the curb, when is that scheduled for repair?
I have some concrete work that I'm kinda working out. I'd like to get it done.
There's a piece on Route one too, isn't there?
Right, there's a piece on Route one. There's also Mr. Wish's driveway.
Oh, yeah.
And he's real particular, and I'd like to get them all done at the same time. So, just trying to get one person to come in here that's acceptable, and the price is reasonable. So, that will be done as soon as I possibly can get it done. It's been kinda hard with the concrete. And actually, Mike from Castle Town, they're doing a bunch of curb work. I was also thinking about trying to actually incorporate that curb and do the wish and the other sidewalk separate from that, and they should be working on that pretty soon.
I just know those people put up with a lot this year with the water.
I know that. It's, it's out of sight, out of mind. Sometimes it gets a little bit forgotten, but it's on the list.
Okay. Consider a bid award for crack ceiling program for two thousand fourteen. Twenty thousand dollars is budgeted in infrastructure account for this project, and bids were opened on Wednesday. Received only one bid from PermaSeal, an amount of eighty-five cents per milliliter foot. There is a comparison number enclosed for your review. There's no questions. I'd like to make a motion to award the crack ceiling to PermaSeal, an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Second. Motion on the floor, second. Any question?
Yeah, I have a question. We do this every year?
No, every other year right now.
Do we really save the streets that much?
Yes, absolutely.
I walk across and then winter, and there's gaping cracks, and this crack ceiling goes on, and everything goes right in. I just have a problem with the crack ceiling.
But would your recommendation be run? To? Abort the whole program, or?
No, not necessarily. Is there some type of substance that's flexible? It just won't split wide open in winter? So, all the salt and debris and whatever, in case maybe it runs in, ain't it?
The crack ceiling is flexible, to a point.
My house.
To a point.
Yeah, to a point.
When temperatures get so low, nothing's gonna be able to sustain. We had some pretty bad winter last year.
No, I understand. That's my question.
When was the crack ceiling done there? Like what you're seeing, that you're referring to?
Actually, John, we haven't done crack ceiling in the last two years, because last year we scheduled to do it, and we paid dallys, we did other things for money, remember? So, it was actually been two years. So, the most recent, this could have been done by twelve.
And it wasn't done by twelve, cause that was Hunter's Chase.
So, it might have been eleven.
Didn't we, didn't we consult with two different engineers, ask them the questions about crack ceiling, and they said it was beneficial?
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's a matter of opinion, but I don't think it'd hurt. I mean, if you're.
It's an insurance policy for the life of your, of your roads. I mean, if you don't do it, and the road fakes. It's an insurance policy for the life of your, of your roads, I mean, if you don't do it and the road fails, crack ceiling is not gonna save that road. If you don't try to mitigate the separation of the road pieces, you will have more water and salt get in even further, crack literally destroying your road surface, and the cost to repave the road is a lot more than twenty thousand in crack ceiling you're looking at doing right now. So, it's an insurance policy.
Yeah, when was the last street cut?
Oh, man.
Oh, six, oh seven?
Yes. So eight years ago?
Yeah.
Big old gaping crack, right across in front of the, the linehouse.
Okay, but here's, here's the thing, is the typical road life on a road, as we've gone through all these road studies and everything else that we've done, everybody's gotten packets from HR Green, we've gotten books and binders and everything else, we paid a lot of money to have road study done with core samples, studies, everything else. In there, it specifically states that the average life of a road is approximately twenty to thirty years, right? So now if we're talking about a road that was put in how many years ago, crack ceiling that was done eight years ago, it appears to me as though maybe crack ceiling is doing something, because we're not, on this road study that was done last year, the street you live on was not named as a street, as a, as a problem road, as a road that needs repair, as a road that needs to be resurfaced. So, maybe that is showing us exactly that, that that is working, that the crack ceiling is working, we're getting more life out of the road, more life out of the road. We're getting more than the twenty to thirty years that we're being told to anticipate with road resurfacing. So, I, I mean, I don't know, there's, there's many ways you can look at it.
I don't know, I walk down the streets in winter, and I, I ask myself, is this really worth it? We can do it, I don't care, but I'm just, that, that's my question. Is there anything that's a little more flexible to the, on your weather? We just don't have the big crack ceiling.
Don't put any blacktop down, don't put any hard surface down, put all rock or put in, go back to the way it was fifty years ago, cobblestone. And you will never have to worry about crack ceiling anything or a road failing. That's the only kind of flexible thing you can have, any hard surface in the winter that we live in will have moved, what it is.
I'm, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about flexibility of.
Material, material of what you use for crack ceiling, yes.
That's all I'm asking.
This is, this is based on, and to be honest with you, Ron, we have asked about other materials and stuff like that. This is what is most feasible for our town with our budget, with our constraints, okay? With the amount of roads that we have, and the amount of roads that we need to cover, the life that we get, and believe me, we look into many different things as to how, you know, and evaluate that as how long we're gonna get, we did it with the thermoplastic versus T, okay? How much longer are we gonna, is this, this product gonna last versus the cost of, of doing it, and this is what's most feasible for us. I mean, when we're talking about having twenty thousand dollars to be able to crack seal at eighty-five cents a foot, it doesn't cover a lot. We got how many miles of road in town, what, within the village?
Actually, forty-two.
Forty-two miles of road. In a budget of twenty thousand dollars, when you're getting eighty-five cents a lineal foot to crack seal it.
There are other options, some towns have experimented with slurry seal, which seals the entire road, but for twenty grand, you only get about a half a block to a block of slurry seal done.
Yeah, I just saw with today's technology, you know, surely they'd come up with something that's flexible for part of the country, obviously not.
Any other questions? There's a motion, there's a second, roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Coleman? Yes.
Whalen?
Yes. Salt supply update, the village's request for a state bid purch, or state bid price was not accepted due to the loss bidder not being able to meet all the demands of the collective bid. Therefore, communities were cherry picked based on their location and order size on our, and our bid was not picked up. We then went out to the open market, and the only qualified proposal we received was from Central Salt in the amount of hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents per ton for an order of exactly six hundred tons. Excuse me, this is sixty dollars more than what we paid last year, but at least we were able to secure the salt. Cost of the salt will be sixty-five thousand seven hundred dollars, and seventy-eight thousand was budgeted to purchase thirteen hundred tons for this year's program and replenish reserves. We have a hundred tons left from last year, which means we will be able, we will have to make do with seven hundred tons, we used nine hundred tons last year.
It is what it is.
It's gonna be tight, it's gonna be tight.
Piattone, we were heading on second round of state bids, and they didn't get picked up the second time around, so then they have to go to the open market. I, I'll be curious to see what they have to pay now with the salt, and it's, it's a nightmare, I don't see how the state bid is a real legal state bid, like the cherry pick.
Yeah.
And then you have to pay the rate that they.
Well, the other thing is too, that, I mean, you've heard about last year, there was, there was towns paying up to two hundred and forty dollars, and Oklahoma was paying up to two hundred and forty dollars a ton because they ran out.
And I, I cry because we could buy a hot patch for eighty-five a ton, a patch of road, so it costs us more to salt the road than it does to patch the road. But like Brian says, the resident doesn't care, it's icy out, he wants his road.
Now, packs are gonna stop from sliding through the intersection when axled.
You gotta get the salt, and we gotta do, you know? And we'll have to modify our program this year to.
New corners, there's still.
Corner is old, it's been.
We're gonna have a good one. Well, these, these are things that we can talk about.
All of your corner, Ron.
That's it, everybody else can.
I, I'd like, I'd like my own salt, please.
I, everybody's got their requests.
Status of replacing two thousand four utility truck will be provided.
It's ordered.
I believe it's ordered, we've ordered a new F three fifty?
Yes.
So.
Nothing fancy, straight bed, we're just putting, we'll put a utility box on it, we're not gonna have, like we did with the other one.
It's gonna be all set up for plow and everything else?
Yes.
And then Floyd's goes, becomes a stake bed truck.
Yes.
Right, and believe it or not, the price we got, I thought was just the material, they're gonna pick the truck up and they're gonna modify it to a stake bed truck for that price that we have.
It's amazing what they're getting for this thing.
Yeah, I looked at that bid.
I don't know how Bob got this thing fixed in, but.
You're getting, you're getting a lot, right?
Right?
You're getting a lot for Mexican help than what prices this thing.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, that concludes my report. Just one, one thing, I went and calculated it, you're looking at four and a half miles that you can put down based on your crack ceiling.
Based on?
Over on the lineal foot? So, approximately one tenth.
Yes.
Ten percent of our roads were.
It just one thing, John, I had the honor to play golf with Brian in an outing, he saw the, the water running on that hole, and I told him that you guys tested for chlorine, and there wasn't chlorine in that creek, and it was a flowing creek, and it had rained for two weeks.
Yeah.
We're still leak detected, figure out.
We're, we're providing water to that, to that golf course at a good rate. I remember walking over that, instead of going over the bridge, walking through that, and boy, it's, it's flowing. Make it out of development?
Yeah.
Bernard Walden update, the engineer for the project was contacted last week, they've completed their engineering and surveying of the property and are in the process of obtaining appraisals for the value of the easement. We will have four property owners to obtain easements from, and the largest owner has already expressed a willingness to grant an easement, but he is not interested in signing an annexation agreement. The project is very much alive, and we will get involved more this fall when we formally seek easement agreements from the four property owners and apply to the IEPA for a permit to accept the wastewater from Bernard. Website redesign update, we don't have a lot to report at this point, I know I did see some photos, the property had gone out and taken some photos of some things in town, and those, actually, I did like the way that was headed, but there isn't anything more to report on that. The wayfinding sign update, we are scouting a spot, we found a tentative spot at Penn Field and Route One, but we don't, we don't have anything else to, to report at this point, we're still looking for a location. Consider an ordinance providing incentives for new businesses located in the downtown, the old downtown area. This was discussed at last month's meeting, and the attorney was instructed to draft the enclosed ordinance. After adoption, press releases will be sent out announcing the new program in hopes of luring prospects into the old downtown area. I know we discussed it last month, does anybody need a refresher, or have any questions about what we had discussed? If not, I will make a motion for the ordinance number.
Twelve fifteen.
Twelve fifteen, providing incentives for new businesses locating in the old downtown area.
There's a motion on the floor, a second, any questions? Roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Comros?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
New housing incentive letters to builders were mailed and press releases issued, so far there have been three housing starts under this new ordinance. And actually, even the one about the new businesses, there was a story in Beecher Herald, about the old downtown, and that, on the Beecher Facebook page, that was, a lot of people were very excited to hear what we were doing, something to revive the old downtown. I think maybe we missed, they missed this one about the builders, but.
I've got a comment, so it's two.
Yes. Tax increment, tax increment finance update, the village president has provided under separate cover copies of articles he read about downtown Urbana and Illinois Tiff District. He would like all board members to read these articles and be prepared to continue discussing if this is something we should pursue for the old downtown area.
And there'll be a test after you guys read it. Actually, what happened was when I went down to Urbana, I was reading the newspaper, and some of the articles in that newspaper brought back to what we were doing in the old downtown, so I thought I'd make a copy of it, let you read it, and then the simple explanation of the test. EastCom board update, State or State's Fire Department, EastCom did finally get an agreement with State or State's Fire Department to be dispatched out of EastCom and for a while there, it looked like they were gonna leave and go somewhere else. Golf course, the last we heard, the negotiations are still going on, and I, and our feeling is that we think something will happen. And as long as we're talking about the golf course, and if you mentioned the other buildings, that owners that we were contacting about their repairs of those buildings, we did send an email to the current owner of the golf course saying that we understand why, maybe we can't bring it up right now, what's the current negotiations, and clothes, whatever the case may be, we need to talk about at least two of their buildings and a part of their property that need to come down. Certainly, they're not gonna be repaired, they need to come down, so just so you know, we followed suit with other buildings in town that needed help. And last that I have is our State Representative, LG Sims, will be holding office hours at the Village Hall from ten till twelve P.M. on this Thursday. Encourage anybody that can attend, stop in, introduce yourself, have any questions, comments, ask for more money, anything like that, by all means, please do so. And also, we invite our residents to come and stop into the Village Hall and speak with your state representative and express any concerns that you have about anything. And that's basically all I have. And if there's nothing else, so, a motion, a second? A motion made, a second, roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
We were told the governor is signing tomorrow the OEGF bill, so they have to take their pendulum in six days. Also, the sales tax distribution legislation is gonna be signed tomorrow, which means that they have to release to us the sales tax distributions by business. So we'll have an idea of what's contributing.